We're good. This is the open workshop, August 29th, 2018. It is 5:38. At this time, I'll take a roll call. Trustee Lonzo is here. Trustee Cruden is here. Trustee Finnerty is here. Trustee LeWande is absent. Trustee Yungo is here. Trustee Ryan is here. Trustee Bellato is here. Vice President Wilbeck is absent. President Broderick is here. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Maida. Good evening, everyone. This week, we have been conducting our convocation for the district administrative team. On Monday, Dr. Degenon facilitated group work on our strategic plan. In the afternoon, we had David Nash, the Director of Legal One, present. And he reviewed new mandates regarding HIV as well as other legal updates. Yesterday, after our morning session on the strategic plan, I conducted a presentation on the Hershey Blanchard situational leadership theory. As we prepare to open school on Wednesday, September 5th, many hours of planning have gone into providing the best curriculum and instruction practices in a safe and productive learning environment for all our students. When we open, our classrooms will be alive with quality instruction. However, we have also spent the summer making security improvements. Mr. Lopez cannot divulge everything that we are implementing with you tonight, but he can give you some updates so that he can share those that are pertaining to school safety that will be quite visible. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. We have been busy this summer evaluating all areas pertaining to school safety and security and have been implementing new safety initiatives throughout the district. As Dr. Wonko just stated, I cannot share all the initiatives we have put in place, but there's some that I can share with you. We have hired Tim Carey as our district safety and security coordinator, developed strategies to assist our school safety and climate team. Revamped the high school proxy swipe card access program. Continued to work with building principals to improve drop-off and pickup areas at our elementary schools. Two administrators and Tim Carey attended the state school safety specialist certification training. Enhanced security in the main entrance. And relocated several offices at Bayonne High School to limit access to the building. Research to develop and upgrade of the district radio system. Research and put in place best practices related to our unarmed security guards. Tonight, we have Resolution B-5 that will be in front of you to make upgrades to our security video cameras and video storage capabilities. As you also see in Resolution C-19 and Resolution C-20, we are recommending that eight Bayonne Board of Ed employees who are retired law enforcement officials be armed with the permission of Dr. Wonko. Five who are current employees and three new employees who will be armed security guards. And tomorrow, Dr. Wonko, Tim Carey, and I will be meeting with Chief Geisler to discuss many more initiatives and programs that we will look to put in place this year. As always, thank you for your support as we all work together to do everything possible to keep our schools safe and secure. Thank you, Dr. Wonko.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Any questions for Mr. Lopez or myself on security? Last month, Dr. Degenon presented the district professional development plan as well as its district goals. Based on the curriculum committee's work and the board as a whole, the district goals focused on multiple-tiered system of supports and chronic absenteeism. As in the past, we will continue our efforts to positively impact student achievement and engagement. I would like to thank the trustees for their suggestions regarding your Board of Education goals for this year. I compiled your suggestions and Dr. Degenon organized your recommendations into major activities, guidelines, and indicators of success. In addition to multi-tiered system of support, you have opted to focus on safety and security issues as a primary consideration for the 2018-19 school year. Dr. Degenon's report complements Mr. Lopez's update, and as you can see, safety and security is of utmost importance for this administration. Dr. Degenon will present to your 2018-19 goals, and he will also summarize the highlights of last year's strategic plan that was reviewed at our leadership convocation on Monday and Tuesday. Dr. Degenon?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko, and good evening, trustees. Thank you for your contributions to the 2018-19 Board of Education goals. Dr. Maida and I attended a workshop based upon the new CUSAC indicators, and administration feels your goals align perfectly with the new CUSAC direction. In the area of instruction and program, Indicator 16, Student Support Systems, the purpose is to identify student needs, deliver supports to all students, and as necessary, remove barriers to learning. Evidence will be a continuation of support, progress monitoring, action plans, and professional development for multidisciplinary teams. Therefore, your goal, the superintendent and administrative team will develop a comprehensive plan to guide a review of MTSS program, a review of intervention and referral service, and to effect revision to enhance MTSS and IRS. By June 2019, 100% of the teaching staff in grades K to 2 and elementary principals will participate in training pertaining to the adaptive diagnostic edbonics program, and there will be a reduction in the number of students being referred to the child. Some of the activities will include will be hiring a multi-successory reading specialist, establishing an MTSS team with the directors of early childhood, DLA, an early childhood teacher, and assistant supervisor special service, and of course, conduct trainings on eye ready and foundations. Additionally, CUSAC Operations Indicator in 15 and 16 says that the school district implements a process to ensure that the school safety, school climate team is in each school with the support of the chief school administrator, and it reviews and takes action to strengthen school climate, educates the community, including students, teachers, and staff to prevent HIV, and provides professional development opportunities. Therefore, with your suggestions, the goal number two will be to maintain a safely secure learning environment, including physical security, facility safety, and a reduction in amount of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation reports through various positive behavior and programs and initiatives. That's a summary of the two goals for the 2018-19 year, and there is a resolution for you to adopt, one on safety and one on multiple-tiered system of supports. We did have an opportunity to review our 2017-18 strategic plan during a leadership convocation. The successes and challenges for each of the strategic plan priority areas were discussed. The areas included student achievement, staff development, technology and operations. A review of each priority area included targets, benchmarks, and goals that were ongoing throughout the year. In preparation for the development of the district strategic plan, each committee reported on whether their SMART goals and projects were completed, and in event if goals were not achieved, a discussion regarding action steps needed to do so were presented. So in the area of student achievement, the committee set the following goals: to reduce chronic absenteeism, to increase and sustain voluntary attendance and tutoring, and to have 70% of students attain 70 or better on the district assessment. When discussing chronic absenteeism and voluntary tutoring attendance, committee realized the goals were lofty and should be revisited for the 2018-19 school year. Moving forward, the committee will identify specific and target starting point for assessing chronic absenteeism. While several projects with chronic absenteeism and tutoring were completed, the committee identified the need to collect that in a systemic way so that starting points can be measured. Additionally, the recommendation was made for baseline data in rural areas for the subgroups of ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and special education. In the area of staff development, committee achieved their goal, which included increasing staff awareness on RTI, improving faculty use of technology, and enhancing mentoring opportunities resulting in improved teacher retention. Staff development was quite successful as this year's staff development targeted specific needs for the faculty and incorporated choice of technology training. The third area of technology, the committee successfully upgraded district Chromebooks, and we begin upgrading the district access points in all schools, starting with the Bayonne High School complex. Through the use of surveys and professional development, we were able to increase their knowledge base of Google Classroom. Additionally, technology teachers were successful in implementing the Educational Technology Standard 8.1 in classrooms to increase digital citizenship. And finally, the operations committee reported on a successful completion of the zero-based budget, which was approved and in place. All timelines for zero-based budgeting process were met. Additionally, aftercare transportation was eliminated, and 100% reduction in spending was attained. Notably, the district was able to reduce spending in the area of lunch duty coverage and school department expenditures. We are looking forward to expanding on this plan for the new academic year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Degenon. Any questions?
As regards to the plan, the goals, we hired two.
We would hope to do that this evening. I think that's one of our resolutions.
Well, my point is, I think we need three.
I agree. With your support, that's what we will do.
Is that on a resolution tonight to hire a third?
What we would do is post interview and then recommend.
I just want everyone to know that we were looking for one more.
Okay, so it's on tape now, everyone agrees, so we're going to the third. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
I would appreciate, and I appreciate the support of the trustees to make sure that this works. I mean, the ultimate goal would be number one, students, and also coaching for the teachers incapable of doing that. And sure, the goal has been.
Thank you. Our facilities and maintenance crews have been working diligently over the past month, not only preparing our schools but attacking various other initiatives. Mr. Smith will share information about the ongoing projects throughout the district, including roofing and progress on the steam pipeline. He will also share a new lunch form procedure and the memorandum of agreement with our bus attendants. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Good evening, trustees. The steam pipe project out on the tennis court, we're probably a week to 10 days ahead of schedule because the pipe came in. The company that we're working with, they were so thrilled at the work that our own maintenance department did in regards to excavating the hole and getting the whole site project ready for them. I was out there the other day with them as they were putting the new piping in, and they have never worked on a project like this where they got so much cooperation. So I'd like to publicly acknowledge Mr. Kubert, Mr. Kiola, and their crews for the work that they have done out there all summer. Because we're ahead of schedule, we probably now will not have to go out for those portable boilers that would have cost the district over $100,000 to hook up. So we're ahead of schedule. The project is moving along at a very nice pace, and October 15th, the radiators in this complex should be humming with steam and everybody should be warm. October 15th is the day that we are required by law to heat the buildings if necessary. So again, kudos to our own crew. And we, once the pipe has been tested and pressure tested, we will do the cover-up, and then we will move on to the project of refurbishing the tennis court. As you can see, the tennis court is a mess because that pipe goes right through the tennis court, and that's the only place that we could replace it. We had to go with the original roof because it would have been much more excavation because we would have had to go much deeper and we would have run into some problems. So we're very happy about that. The three roofing projects, Washington School is moving along at a steady clip, and we're anxious to get them out of there. They should, if you've passed that parking lot, you can see where they have put all their equipment and working on that over the course of the summer. That's moving according to schedule, as is the project at number three, Robeson School that is also on target to be finished within the next couple of weeks. The project on the main roof here at Bayonne High School, they didn't get as quick a start as they liked, but they are promising us that by October, they should be finished with that particular project. Once school is in session, we will limit them to where they can go up on the building so there'll be no student contact with any of the workers. They'll install a lift on the outside of the building, and we'll give them a parking spot or two for the crane. Their workers will then have to park down behind the stadium where they can get access there. Also, we're going with a, it's not really a new lunch procedure form. Everything old is new again. We're going back to the way that we used to do it. If you remember in years past, everybody got sent home a paper application, and then they returned it regardless of if they wanted the free lunch, free or reduced lunch, or if they didn't want it. What we've noticed over the last two years is that our free lunch percentage has dropped from about 62% to about 58%, which equates almost to 600 total students district-wide, and our population is growing. So it was a cause of concern for us, but we looked at it. We feel that with the current political climate, some people may not feel like filling out a paper application and getting it into us, and that's bad because some of those children aren't getting the nourishment that they're entitled to. So hopefully, by going back and the homeroom teachers making a comprehensive list of who returned it, we will get a true reading now, and maybe our percentages will go up a little and we'll be able to service those children at lunchtime if they're free and/or reduced. We will continue with our universal breakfast program. We call it the BIG program, Breakfast in the Classroom, so 10,000 students every day can receive a free breakfast if they want it, and we will continue with that. And the bus attendants have tentatively signed a memorandum of agreement. They are the last major union, so we're hoping to get that on next month's agenda. We'll have all the facts and figures for you. It's identical to what the paraprofessionals signed in terms of percentages, and we're happy about that. This is the first time that I can remember in about 14 years that all of our unions now have signed contracts, and we should be able to move along with labor peace in the district, which equates to better morale, and better morale equates to better teaching, and better teaching equates to students being happy and in a good spot. So I think everything is good. So thank you. That's all I have, Dr. Wonko.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions for Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith, the high school roofing project, were those the vendors that were kind of not returning our phone calls for a little bit?
No, no. That was the solar part project on the ice rink roof. You're correct. But he did show up today with a tractor trailer full of solar panels. We have them stored in the back, and that project is going to move along also. So we'll start generating some more solar wrecks from those panels up on the ice rink roof, which, you know, that gives the district some newfound money. So we're happy about that.
I would just like to thank Mr. Smith for all the efforts he's given us, and this being his, I guess, last meeting as the business administrator. So thank you so much, Mr. Smith, for all the great contributions.
Thank you.
I too echo that. At the administrative leadership meeting, I had explained to everyone, I know Mr. Smith from when he was 14 years old, and we've worked together for a great number of years, and he was a great writer, and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
At Bayonne High School, online parent portal is open. It displays the student schedules, and the schedules will also mail home. Also, the parent portal info information was emailed to all district parents in addition to information regarding the real-time parent mobile app. Student portal already available to high school students will now be open to students in grades seven and eight so they can diligently monitor their grades and progress through the school year. The students will only have access to view their grades and attendance. Also, students at the high school will now keep their Chromebook device until they graduate. So rather than us collecting them at the end of each year and reissuing them again the next year, they will keep it throughout their high school career and just turn it in when they reach graduation.
So they're using it during the summer?
Yes.
Will that program, that safeguard be put in place over the summer?
It is, and it will be continued.
Okay, so someone will go out and...
Yes, we'll be monitoring that throughout the summer, which is also a great benefit to our students.
Now, there's one question I have with regard to that change. You get it in freshman year, and you return it in senior. Is there any way to like check at the end of school year, the student still has their Chromebook? Are they still using it? Do they still have it in their possession? Any way to follow up from year to year if the Chromebook is still in that student's possession?
I'm sure Mr. Tegu has a process to do that, but we could do that with our teachers in class as they're doing assignments. There'd be various grades that we could check, but I could meet with him tomorrow to make sure there's something formalized.
Okay, thank you.
Finally, in addition to important phone calls and emails, the district will be using, and this will be for the first time, will be using the texting feature in real time for notifications. So parents will be able to get a text message if we have an emergency. That will go out right away to all the parents. If we have an important notification, that also would go out by text. You can also follow us, as you know, on Facebook and Twitter. So that concludes my report. Any questions for me?
I'd just speak some more because Dr. Maida just ran out the door.
President Broderick just informed me that our board secretary just left the building. So we're taking a pause on our video. There he is. I'll turn the meeting back to Dr. Maida.
I thought we were going to our guest speakers. Would we like to introduce our guest speakers this evening?
Yesterday, going to first note committee, we had our very next conversation and introduction of Frontline, which is an online application process, which I think we will be very happy with. My Dr. Wonko introduced Frontline last year. We didn't think it was at the right time to do so, but we do think that Frontline would help us out in the application process, getting better candidates. We are spending close to $20,000, we did last year, on ads through Star Ledger. Frontline has a pool that we don't want to have to advertise. Also, help out with pay for. I'm going to turn it over now to Jason and Frontline to give you a short...
Mr. Wonko, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and discuss with you today, frontline education, recruiting, and hiring. As we were beginning to discuss here, first of all, my name is Jason Kunkel. I am the representative of New Jersey. I have an education background. I taught for seven years outside of suburban Philadelphia. Taught middle and high school social studies. And I was an academic coordinator of alternative charter school in the city of Philadelphia for two years. I am a happy product that I have received both of my education jobs by using this system that I'm here to present to you on the board today. This is near to be in my heart, and it's something that we will feel will be a great benefit for you folks. I want to introduce my colleague, Danny O'Shaughnessy, real quick.
Yes, good to meet you, Danny O'Shaughnessy. I'm here to serve Jason. Really, I met several folks last year. Just want to make a comment that Frontline Education has been in business about 23 years. We are here to really partner with the education community, in particular, to achieve student growth, student outcomes. That's our ultimate goal, is to partner with administrators around the country. We're serving 12,000 school districts, more than 96,000 schools across the country, and here in New Jersey, more than 88% of the districts in New Jersey are using at least one of our current applications. So again, we're proud to be able to have the opportunity to continue to serve you. I think you're actually currently utilizing vicariously Frontline Education solution through, I think it's ESS on the substaffing side, but we have the backend engine software solution for that. So again, thank you for this opportunity to partner with you. As we hear from districts around the state and around the country today, there are holes in the bucket, as they say, for attracting teachers of, I hate to say it, of my generation, the millennials. Typically, today's individuals do not go onto a district website or look at a posting that's available in the newspaper. We do things more electronically, and this has hurt the retention efforts within school districts. More than 50% of your teachers are leaving within a five-year period. So there is a very big cost that comes to hiring and recruiting individuals. What we're trying to do is ensure that you folks are able to attract and hire the best employees in an efficient manner. We were mentioning earlier that you folks are spending upwards of $20,000 by posting in the Star Ledger. We have the two largest job boards that attract to, and the statistic is in our sheet right now, at over 80,000 active New Jersey candidates that are looking for positions. And not only is it helpful for helping you fill those positions, but it's also helpful for districts and employees to find your district, to find the openings that are available for you. So it's going to help to actively, proactively recruit employees, and most importantly, help to manage the paperwork and workflows within the district itself. Each job posting, each position can be set up automatically to route to certain principals, to certain leaders or individuals with full transparency. So you're able to see all the paperwork that is appreciated with it. Administrators are able to overview and review. You're able to share notes, and send in the time and effort that it takes to sit in a room like we are here today and reviewing information. This is all done electronically for you. So our system allows you to attract more applicants, recruit smarter, hire the best, and with onboarding as well. Onboarding paperwork is a very big concern for school districts. You have your new employees come into a room and fill out the paperwork. What we're able to do is electronically send those onboarding packets so that individuals can proactively create or complete the application process or paperwork upon being hired before coming into the classroom. That paperwork can be routed to specific departments and individuals to ensure that it is getting to the level where it needs to, and then when an individual be able to comes in, you're able to review the steps of the process together. The big goal, as it says at the bottom, is empowering our employees. We want this to be a fast, fun process to be able to track those candidates and have them working through the system together. I was mentioning the idea of a job board, and as you see by the statistics on the board here, we've been able to attract over 500, 500,000 certified teachers that you folks have the opportunity to tap into. One of the best things we have about our system is called proactive recruiting. And ma'am, I'm going to use an example that you were just using a couple of minutes ago by finding possibly another individual for our job support. What you can do within our system is you can proactively search for an individual or a job title. So whether it was a director of...
Dyslexia.
Dyslexia, or whether it was an AP Biology teacher. You now have the opportunity to add and create a campaign that will allow you to proactively search individuals. So you can type in AP Bio and look for certain characteristics that come with it, whether it's years of experience, subjects caught, whatever it can be. And what will happen is based upon all of the individuals that we have, it's going to give you a list, whether it's 10 candidates or 500, and then it allows you as a district to reach out to those individuals. This is very near and dear and important to me because I actually had this happen to me when I was looking for jobs itself. At the time, I was thinking of possibly moving to South Carolina. So I went forth and had all my South Carolina certificates and information, and as I was a part of our recruiting and hiring solution for an applicant myself, I actually had districts reach out to me and say, hello, Jason, we found your information and see that you're interested in possibly moving to South Carolina. Would you like to talk to us? We feel like you'd be a great candidate. So it allows districts to tap into other avenues in individuals who may not know you exist if you're just posting in a newspaper or just having postings outside your door. In New Jersey alone, over 280 school districts are using this solution. In Hudson County, we have Secaucus, Jersey City, West New York, some of the major ones that are using this as well. I met with Hudson County Schools of Technology yesterday on recruiting and hiring. We work for districts of smaller sizes. A quick story is Belleville and Emerson, who were spending a similar price with the Star Ledger and were not receiving the talent they were looking for. They were able to transition to recruiting and hiring and see an increase of their solutions, or excuse me, their applicants they were looking for. We've also worked in the bigger school districts in New Jersey, Linden, West Orange, East Orange. A favorite story of mine is in Long Branch. Long Branch was a school district... Long Branch was a school district that had zero frontline solutions as of a year and a half ago. We were able to discuss with them kind of the vision of what we have within recruiting and hiring, and they were able to automate their process very similar to what you folks are looking at as well. And they are one of our references. I would be happy to get you in touch with them to talk about the experiences that they have with this system itself.
Quick question, Jason.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have criteria that Frontline has set up with regard to who you allow into your database?
Very good question. So we require all applicants to be able to fill in information. And we're looking for certified individuals and also non-certified staff as well. So if you're a paraprofessional, bus driver, custodial staff, there are different listings and information that you'll be able to fill out as well. A part of our standard application is asking for a very standard application form that you folks would have in New Jersey to ensure that qualified individuals are filling out the information for it. So it's allowing for a first step of verification within the process, and then you folks at your district level can customize or conform your application process specifically for your district.
Can you adapt what our specification...
Correct. And why this is so important from an applicant's standpoint? As I mentioned, over 280 school districts are using our solution. So from an applicant, I know that if I create a count, I now have visibility into all those school districts. So as an applicant, I don't have to look at the newspaper every single day. I don't have to go to every single website. I can view and create my searches from an applicant and see the job postings that are available for me. I have a place where I can store my resume, my cover letter, any references of information. And if I see a job posting that's available, I now click on that link and fill in any additional information that may be specific for the district. So you're able to increase your applicant pool because it is becoming the standard of use, not just in New Jersey, but nationwide as well. And it helps you attract those candidates moving forward.
Past the trash part, that's your answer.
Yes, past the trash is a part of that as well. So the new law that passed this year for New Jersey, past the trash, that information is uploaded as part of the recruiting process. So it's automatically in there. Past the trash, lovely name as it is. So that information...
Jason, I appreciate you bringing that up because we did have a secretary this summer who was pretty much dedicated just to the past, the trash legislation, because not only do you have to get it out, but you got to follow up to make sure that you're getting it back. We have received some of our past employees or former employees who have worked in different districts, and it's such a smooth and easy process when we receive an email from your company.
And that really kind of helps with the transparency available to you. My biggest fear in being in the position, not at this level, but as an academic coordinator who is responsible for hiring people within my charter school, when you find that really good candidate, you don't want to let them get away. And sometimes when you have the process of paperwork, tracking down information, if anything could slow down, then if they're a quality candidate, you don't want them to be plucked from a different area. So now with the transparency that's available, not only with the applicant process, but who is receiving the paperwork within the district, it allows billing principals, it allows different administrators to focus on the activities that are important to them. So if I'm the principal at the high school and I'm responsible for hiring my individuals, it doesn't have to start at the top and then work its way down. Those individuals can be a part of the process from the get-go.
Jason, do you meet with or interview the candidate or is that strictly the school district?
You folks, do we as frontline? No, we do not meet with them. But what we have available here, not only do we have a library of over 700 specific interview questions that you can ask and create different forms for it, but if there are specific interview questions or processes that you folks use at the district during the implementation period, that is when those processes are uploaded and included within your system to be able to ask those questions. We also have the capability within it to share notes, transparency between department teams, administrators, so we don't have to wait to sit in a room to review information that can be completed prior as well.
And what is the extent of your advertisements? Is it nationwide?
Nationwide, yes. We're in over 12,000 school districts today. I'm missing a statistic somewhere on that.
Yeah, there's the previous two slides that showed a lot of the statistics, but we've got 12,000 school districts, 96,000 schools that are out there, I think it's more than 1.7 million educators that are looking for jobs around the country. So you'd be able to tap into that.
How do prospective applicants know to see you?
Very good question. So what we have as part of our proactive recruiting is that you can tag your postings or listings to some of the things you're doing right now. You mentioned, Dr., earlier of your Facebook page. So if you had a listing for a position, you could link to it on your Facebook page, and if an applicant was interested in signing up, it would take them right to the recruiting page where they would fill in the information.
What I mean is, I'm a new teacher, coming out of school. I just newly minted. How do they even know you exist?
Very good question, because our recognition within the colleges itself as this is a way to, for teachers to be able to sign in for the information. This is kind of the place that they're going to, to be able to look for it. So that's starting more...
You're right, we're not advertising at higher ed colleges or schools to that, but we do have a natural pool that we have, and teachers are hearing about it and finding out about it. But we're not actually going to higher ed colleges and advertising to you all.
Wouldn't you be part of like a senior seminar and just say, you guys were looking for a job?
Those are avenues that we're...
These are different...
Those are avenues that we're currently exploring and having those pockets in certain parts of the state and with certain colleges that I know we work with a little bit more closely to make sure that it's top of mind.
One of the things we're tasked with is making sure that our hiring practices are not discriminatory. In other words, we have to look like the community has your company fitting with that.
And that's our number one goal, and that's why I love our system, allows you to conform it and work with it around the goals.
How do you make sure that people in the minority community know that you exist and that we... Because right now, we're not going to be able to do that if we hire you. We can't go out anywhere and do that. Or we shouldn't have to because we're trying to save money. How, I don't want that one thing to trample over the other. How do we know that that's not going to happen?
That's a very good question, and what we're here to do is to help with outreach, whether it's from flyers that you have on your district website, any other type of information that's there to spread the word that Frontline is available for you. As Danny was mentioning too, with over, having over 1.6 million applicants out there and 81,000 within the state of New Jersey alone, the recognition of it is out there, but then working with you specifically on things we can do to...
Are you as a company looking at those factors?
Yes, we are. So here's a great point. I think one way we can do this is partnering with you to do this. And the way we do that is we partner with school districts and help facilitate, say, let's go to a job fair in this community or this community and go to this job fair. We actually have a job fair packet that we provide districts to partner with them to say, let's target this group, this minority group or this particular group, to make sure we have those balances in place. We certainly can get better in that area, but that's, we're hearing it loud and clear, and we're getting better there. Any other questions or concerns?
I think if you look at your reference sheet, there should be Manchester in there. Is that correct?
For, yes, I believe it.
I brought them in when they were AppleTrack. I brought them into Manchester, and we were extremely satisfied with the program itself and the support that was provided. And we're able to do searches and fill positions that we had difficulty filling in the past. One of the biggest features we liked was the ability for, let's say you're in the English department, we're looking for a specific English teacher with certain skills, we could actually narrow it down to that. When we do our search on the dashboard and say, I want somebody who has five years of experience, or I want somebody who's versed in Shakespeare, and we could design our own questions for these candidates that are put on the frontline package so that when they're applying to bay on for that position, we get a sense a little bit about what they are before we even go any further in the process. It also had archived for us all of their reference letters, all their references, their scores, practice scores, everything's on there, and everyone has the ability to look at this 24 hours a day. So we didn't have to call in a committee to look at the paper screening process.
I think what trustee Ryan is more concerned about is, without sounding insensitive, is affirmative action. How are we going to guarantee affirmative action?
That's really not their issue. That's our issue, the district's issue. We have to find ways to go out and meet with groups and explain to them this. There's no course for the candidate to get on the system. So we go out and we say, we're on this system, and we can even set up days that we have our library open with computers that people could register. We could have nights that we do that, where we could go to their organizations and assist them with filling out the application, which is very easy to do on the app, but it gives us our first view of that candidate, of how computer savvy they are, because that's somebody we want in our district as well.
Plus, there's a very unique, I work with Frontline in my district.
Yeah, you're going to be a...
I work with Frontline in my district like almost, you know, once a week at least. There's a great, unique function where all the internal postings can actually go internally out, you know, via email to everyone. So as opposed to, you apply, and there's a timestamp, you know, like if we're only going to keep up, if you want to look at for a football coach, you're looking for someone to run the art club, you're looking for someone internally, all those activities go through Frontline as well. So we use that all the time, and it's a very unique feature. Plus, what I like about it is that we set the parameters, it's closing at 12:00 a.m. When it closes at 12:00 a.m., that's it, you missed it. It's not, oh, we're about to do it, and then someone sneaks in at the last minute. It's an actual hard cut. So it's a very unique feature, where, you know, Frontline's very easy to use, very manageable. And as far as name recognition, I mean, the college I went to, every college that I've had spoken to people know about Frontline. I mean, it was AppleTrack, but now it's Frontline. I mean, it's one of those things that they just kind of push for teaching positions.
Well, I mentioned senior seminar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of the last classes or...
Right, and then if you Google...
These are the places that you should go if you're looking to apply.
Correct, right. And then if you Google "teaching jobs in New Jersey," it comes up. Frontline, it comes up as one of the hits. So they know, you know, it's a pretty well-known system at this point.
Well, we talked about this yesterday. I think the biggest asset to this, Mr. Lopez, you mentioned it, the amount of time not only you, but interview committee spends interviewing. This is like going to step maybe three, where you've really been able to like, no, I don't have to be out of the office interviewing. I have to take care of this, this, and this. So we really optimize the time you're able to spend on your job, not sitting in an interview, but doing other things that I should say more pertinent, I don't want to reduce it to that, but taking care of things that are a little bit more germane than sitting in an interview with 12 people.
Trustee, absolutely. We discussed the amount of applications yesterday, right? Even on your resolution, I see 13 today with the coaches and advisors, talking probably close to 1,000 applications, paper wise, that we have to go through that come from schools. So now you're talking every secretary, every administrator throughout the district is be saving time because now, again, one, they're online, and two, they are also timestamped. So we are going to build transparency where, as you want to go in, review when it was submitted, if anything is online and timestamped for us.
Well, the other thing that came up in ESS session was also oftentimes, we can see a person being employed at this particular time for a certain position, and at the same time being employed for another position. Wouldn't that come up in AppleTrack? No, it wouldn't?
It's an application, it's an application.
It's actually very user-friendly. I have, I use, I use Frontline to apply for jobs, and what happens is it saves your information from one, from one city to another where you're applying, and your information is transferred. But you have to apply for, by one word, let's say in Fairfield, and I see that Fairfield has the opening for a position I want. I click it, it takes me right to Frontline, from, right from their website, from Fairfield's website. I apply, it's sent directly to their personnel, and they view it and say, okay, we're going to call you, her, she has the qualifications we want, we're going to call her in for an interview.
But your resume is stored?
My resume is stored, my certifications are stored, all my cover letters, everything.
You update, update...
Yes, yes. You update whatever you want to update.
Each teacher would theoretically have their own homepage where I could store and update my information. And that can be used for external applications to another school district or internal applications as well. So if I'm currently a social studies teacher and there's a football opening, I'm able to click on the internal applicant. You folks already have my information on file since I work here, so the application process may not be as stringent. You need to know who I am and make sure I have the qualifications, but I may not need to fill in three sets of paperwork because you already have it on file. And that's automatic, all uploaded and updated per position, internal, external, with that individual.
It's great.
That's great.
A little bit of a check and balances. There is trustee Vlado said she applied. Did you receive something that went to know that, or they received it?
Yes, so there's an, there's two things about it. There's two things I really love about it. There's an automatic email that is sent out to the applicant who submitted the information saying, thank you, your application has been submitted. There is an email that is sent to the school, to the administrator who is in charge of receiving information, letting them know that there's been an application that has been submitted, follow the link to it. There's also a great other feature. I'm sure you folks received hundreds of applicants for a position, and you may only decide to interview five or seven of them. What you can do is create an automatic filter and folder that you can send an automatic reply to the other 95, thank you for your time, unfortunately, we're not moving forward with you, we'll keep your information on file for a year, best of luck to you. So you don't have to worry about the return emails, phone calls, drive bys saying, where's my status? And that, from a, from somebody who's applied for jobs, and we've all applied for jobs before, that goes a long way, knowing that at least the time and effort I put into it is being reciprocated, at least with an email, thank you for your time.
Can you add to trustee, we also discussed yesterday that we would probably set up an area with a computer for those who would have, don't have that ability to do that. So we'll make sure that if somebody, I'm coming in for, starting to a job and I don't have a computer at home, we'll help them fill out the application right here at the high school to be able to do that. And my last question would be, and this goes right from if we're looking for a superintendent right down to a bus aide, so to speak.
Absolutely, yes. It's all positions that are available for it, and then you can even, as we're talking about the proactive part of it, filter and search for those administrative positions all the way down to paraprofessional, aide, whatever type of position would be in this list.
Thank you. Now, quick question. Actual vetting. I write anything I want on that thing. I can tell you I'm from the University of Virginia. Who does the, that the diploma exists, that the past, the trash has been complied with all of this stuff? Who does the hard, actual vetting?
You folks would do it. We'll provide the outlet for them to attach information or any certification that will be available that is stolen in the school district to properly vet the individuals.
With your other districts of this size, soft costs, soft costs, not the advertising, approximately what can we expect to save if we do this, you know, like all our secretaries who aren't working, don't have to do this? What kind of savings can we look at?
Yeah, for a district that has like 1,000 FTEs, which I know are larger than that, typically they're saving between $100 to $150,000 in soft costs alone, just to be able to save time of people that actually have to go through this, go through interviews, respond to emails, a lot of times, usually $100,000, typically in soft costs for 1,000 FTE-sized district to remove.
Getting back to your candidate pool, do we have, you know, again, within five years, half the people are no longer using your teaching certificate. What's the dropout rate of people of the districts that use this system? Do they have a higher retention rate or a lower retention rate?
We've definitely seen a higher retention rate for candidates for districts because you're properly vetting the individuals, so you'll be able to see this is someone who is dedicated in the right fit. What we're really focused on is making sure that you have the right fit for your community. And by having these steps in place at the front end before you're getting that to the face and face, it allows you to quickly rank and be able to see these individuals who are a proper fit for the school district. And we've definitely seen...
Yeah, we've actually partnered with the Johns Hopkins Research and Learning Institute, with our own institute, partnered with, to make sure the data is relevant and statistically relevant, to make sure that we can look at those further details we provide to you. We have The Line Magazine as one of those outlets that some of those data is in there if you pass that off you want, but we're partnering with Johns Hopkins to provide you with that data. We have some good, you know, references and stories about that, but we want to get more relevant data for you.
And I have it as a one shooter here, but to expand upon what Danny was describing here, statistical data for the applicants that are hiring the information that you can update within the system in real time, set up the different reports and analytics behind it to be able to track that for your hiring and then down as well. We've also seen this to you folks to be able to kind of get a better understanding of the candidates that we're looking for. So I'm going to go back to the example we used earlier. If we're looking for an English teacher who's had five years, five years' experience, Shakespearean experience as well, we want to be able to get to a point where we know... be able to get to a point where we know that if we hire this type of individual, here's the results we're gonna get in the first five years. They're gonna take X amount of days of, of, sick days per year, they're gonna be above adequate for their evaluations for the first three years, and we know that they're gonna stay an average between seven and 10 years within the school district. So, we wanna provide you folks that analytical data and information that you can be able to use to make sure that the individuals that you're hiring and looking at are really specific and in good for the community and school.
I have a question, how much does all of this stuff cost?
So, I presented pricing to you, it is a one-time implementation fee of $6,000, I believe the yearly fee is around $34,000? Or am I off, I've done enough, no, maybe I'm off.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, yes.
Well, we'll take thirty, you're on.
Oh, boy, Jason, my fingers are crossed.
It goes your Christmas bonus.
Yes, I know, yeah. No, and so it's a one-time implementation fee that allows you for the, for the setup and completion, and, and as Mr. Copaz and I were talking about, this is the perfect time of the year to do it, because now we're able to really set back and learn and understand the processes you folks want, as we're getting ready for the next hiring season. As we were discussing, I'm sorry.
How about you?
No, I was saying, as we were discussing earlier, we're seeing districts begin to hire earlier and earlier in the cycle now, so we wanna be, make sure that everything is set up and ready to go for the beginning of school year, and that comes with support, implementation, updating of different files and forms, and we're able to assist with, with our support staff team, that is based out of Long Island and Malvern, Pennsylvania.
Is there a fee that a teacher has to pay at, at the track?
No.
No, so it's like, free for the teacher, it's the district that pays for it?
You can think of it like a LinkedIn pro pop for K-12, but they also attach a resume, and all districts in the country are gonna access that LinkedIn profile, it's kind of like that, but it's free for the, for the teachers.
Okay, great.
So, I have a question, so what's gonna happen to that secretary that we had dedicated the summer to actually look at that stuff, and her job, if we actually hired this company?
The secretary who does it currently?
Yeah, yeah.
It frees her up to do, I was talking about Mr. Copaz.
No, but she, she does this, like, full-time in the summer?
No, I don't think we have a full-time secretary who does that.
She, you get to pass the trash legislation all summer, and making sure that the candidates were meeting that standard.
So, she's doing her own vetting?
That's, that's what, that's what she was doing all summer, she was devoted, particularly through, you know, just new hires, it wasn't like that.
Because she would still be, we would still be responsible to do that, Frontline's not gonna do that for us, so we absolutely would need that person, it would just make it a lot smoother, easier, more efficient, and then free that person up to do some other things as well.
And it, and it makes, and I think it also makes the position available to a wider range of people. I don't pick up a newspaper and look up for an administrative position, I literally go to schools that are on Frontline and find them, and see what positions they have available, and apply that way. We do open it up to more candidates.
Right, no offense intended here, are there any other companies out here who do, who do a similar thing, like Frontline?
Not with the reach that we have for the potential candidates, and not K-12-focused as we are. So, you may be able to... There's indeed, you know, companies like that, but... But it's not focusing for the education base, and to go back to your questions earlier, you're not finding the right candidates for your district, and then we go back in the idea, is this person gonna last with your school?
You're reasonably confident that our first five-year turnover will decrease, that is...
I am, and as long as we work with you to properly vet and set up the system...
Oh, actually, yeah, the vetting court, that's why I asked, it's definitely on them, we can't have anybody come back, what's the later time, Frontline told us they were okay, no, 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 that's us, never goes away, fine, that's, that's on the record, that's done, but you're, you're telling us that the pool is so deep and so widespread, that the people they get to pick from, they're gonna be picking more winners than losers, now to, to oversimplify greatly.
And think about this way, if you're only posting in the Starlight Room, I'm just gonna use that as an example, how far is that reach? Yes, this is a very heavily populated area, but you're not reaching individuals who may live in the center of the state, or up north, or people like myself who lived in Pennsylvania who might wanna work in New Jersey. There is this untapped pool that you will now have access to, to be able to go through and vet and find those high-quality individuals that would be very attracted to a school district.
One last question, let's just say we, as a district, find out, like, in mid-November, that a teacher is leaving, can we reach out to you and say to you, we need a teacher of physics for, whatever, we just need a teacher of physics, do you address that issue, can we reach to you?
You guys, we'll give you, we'll give you the tools to do that.
So, it comes from us?
We have it, it's there, all you have to do is go on and look.
All right.
So, ready there?
So, it's a come and go?
You know what it's like, it's like, they're shopping, and we're going to pick up the groceries ourselves, except instead of...
They also do delivery, right?
Or we're getting teachers.
They do delivery.
Right, so, I mean, so what I'm saying is, like, you know, that's what they are, they're like the store, we go get it, so we kinda do all of the vetting and...
I like metaphors, I do, I like metaphors.
So, you know, I mean, but like, one thing I wanna say, and I mean, it just, every reputable district that I know of in the state that I've seen uses Frontline, this is the 21st century, like, this is LinkedIn for education.
LinkedIn for education.
Yeah, you know, and I mean, that's what it is, I mean, I've never seen, I mean, when I first got here, I actually asked if we had AppleTrack, because it has AppleTrack, remember? And they all looked, and they said, no, and I was like, what do you mean? Like, who doesn't use AppleTrack?
Is, is there...
Well, that was Dr. Wonko's initiative.
Right.
Way back when.
We did the presentation...
What was BW?
Okay, we were ready to go, but at that time, if you remember, we were working with 70 fewer staff members, we were not hiring at that time, because we were in that financial situation, so it didn't make sense for us to spend money for a company that is going to give us a big pool of applicants.
And we couldn't hire.
We're at the point now, as Mr. Copaz says, we went through 1,000 applications for just the coaching positions, we're at a point now where it makes sense to pay that money, so that we're more efficient, and we get the best candidates that fit our district.
I think it's a good fit, I do.
You have a question there?
Frontline.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so, the yearly fees for the whole digitalizing, you know, the application process, but do we have to pay to post a job?
No. Unlimited postings that comes, you have the control over the postings you want, you can now save your postings and create the different templates online, recreate the wheel every single time, you can set postings for the future, so if we know that we're gonna have a math position, but we don't wanna post it until May 5th, I, we can create it now and have a go-live day of May 5th and an end date of July 1st, so it allows you the flexibility, and there's no charge for, for any postings, and that's as much as you folks plan.
Safe to say, it's like Boomerang on Gmail.
That's right.
That's America now.
The thing it also...
That was for you, trustee.
...do, is, we talked about how our pool sometimes is a little small, like, choosing from, this opens it up, the qualifications, you look specifically for what you, what you want in a candidate.
Post the job on your boards, do you have to have the application package, or can any school post the job?
No, they have to.
It would be part of our...
They have to have it.
Yes.
They have to be in network.
How, how do we, as a district, address the digital divide, or lower, educate, the jobs that require a lower educational background may not be very good with a computer, and are we going to make an affirmative effort to reach, not only, it's nice to say we have a computer in the hallway, but how does anybody know that that computer in the hallway is there?
Got it.
And that's what I'm concerned about, there are some people, let's face it, we have people in the district who can't use a computer, and we're going to, the community's going to produce them, so how do we reach out to them and let them know that we have these positions, they're not a professional staff, but, but you have to go online.
It's kinda like they do it now, they come in and they ask for the application, so when they come in and ask for it, they're told...
But, but right now, there's an ad in the paper that says that...
Trustee Ryan is talking about specifically, will we have to do ads? In the other districts I've used, we did occasionally use paper ads as well as relying on, at that time, AppleTrack, so there will be occasions where you're correct, you might have to put an ad in, or you might have to do other postings to get people in for that clientele.
That could be local, like, when you do the Starlight, you're doing community news or Jersey, yeah.
Well, there's some people who wouldn't even know there's a job opening unless they had a computer, I think that's what chucked in.
You just said, they put it in the community news, or you put it in the Jersey term, or you do local posting, you wouldn't have to go out to the Starlight, because that was about the job.
Exactly.
And people come in.
Also, every year, and we just did it this summer again, we mail to all, all local organizations, such as, just as the PEO, with openings and then applications, so we would have the applications available for you, for them, and then also we do the job pairs, so we could easily set up the computer there for them, so it would cut down a lot of time of us going back and forth, and we'd have it available right there for them. That could be one of the additional duties that the secretary who is doing...
The secretary, she's gonna say that.
She can, she can assess that person with the application.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, Sean and Jason, how you spell your name, Sean?
It's actually Danny, oh, Sean is cute.
Oh, okay, I think it's...
Yeah, Danny.
Okay.
She has a son named Sean, that's why.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'll do a little housekeeping first, you all have your brand new calendar, and the first piece of business that I put in your calendar, was for the month of October, we have our school board's convention, and your mandated training, most of the mandated training is on Thursday, October 25th. If you plan on attending, you have to get back to me, if, tonight, if you know you're not going, please tell me tonight, Chrissy and I are holding a set of rooms that we would like to release back to school boards, so anybody that's due for your mandated training, that is on Thursday, October 25th, you're welcome to go, I'm sure you've already seen the school board notices that have come out on the classes that are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, if there's anything else, we can register you, if it's something beyond Thursday, but please, this is the first piece of business I have to ask you to do in your brand-new calendar book, is, we're gonna decide who's going and who's not. Okay. The second thing is, I apologize for all the purchase orders, but there's just as many purchase orders across the hall that still need to be signed, it's just, that's what happens, as most of our trustees that have been here a while know, start of school, start of fiscal year, this is what it is, so I apologize. If you have any questions on particular purchase orders, please just put them to the side now, and then we could deal with whatever administrator's in charge of that, before we leave tonight, okay? All right, so, I'd like to start with our agenda, most of our agenda was...
Dr. made it before you go there. Just so that, we three-year, we three-year board members, I did call, because the mandated training for Governance III, which would pertain to me, and I know who else, but you're not running in November, I asked, since the mandated training is October 25th, and the board election is November 6th, it's possible I may not be here, do we still have to fulfill that mandated training on October 25th? I called about it, yes, you do. Yeah, they told me that two years ago, and I, same question.
The reason for that is the October, folks, the October 25th is the last time the governance training is given. Trustee Valado signed up over the summer, and I believe took her Governance II, she didn't wanna wait till October. This is the last training that you can receive, is October 25th.
But you could also do the online option.
I think everybody knows my feeling about the online, I'm really, really do miss something doing the online, the online was put in purpose just in case of an emergency that you wouldn't get hit on your governance, but there's no, there's no substitute that being in a room with other trustees and other districts, and I won't give you the commercial from New Jersey School Board.
Well, just like Frontline, and this being the 21st century, so is online training, it's viable, and, you know, so...
If you think that, trustee, we, obviously, we, we're gonna disagree. Yes?
Comment number two, there is a major, major CPAC meeting on Tuesday evening, October 2nd, that all board trustees...
I think we all should listen to Ava, because this is all news to me, we might listen to the trustee.
There's a major CPAC meeting on October 2nd, all but, all but board trustees have been invited to, and I just think that should be put in our calendar, too.
October 2nd?
October 2nd, Tuesday evening, am I right?
Do you know where, or...
Yes, it's gonna be October 2nd, it's gonna be, I think, in the multipurpose room here, at the, right above the ice cream.
Okay, so I'll move ahead with the agenda, most of the agenda was sent home, email, and then posted to our website, I will go over any revisions or any new items, on approval of minutes, the very last resignation is new, since you've seen that, that is the only change on minutes and communication. Moving ahead to curriculum, all three of our committees met, I've attached a copy of the agendas, there was a synopsis of the curriculum meeting, and the sign-off sheet, so you all have that in your packages. So, at, at curriculum, I'd like to ask everybody, there's a revision, I've been asked Dr. Dixon to help me on A2, and I'd just like to say, the curriculum section of the agenda was moved by President Broderick, and it was seconded in by trustee Valado.
No, it's the other way around.
Was it the other way around?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I am sorry, it is the opposite way. Maria went first, and President Broderick did go second.
I did it online.
Well, you did.
I'm going to the paper thing.
Okay, so we'll turn to A2, the Every Student Succeeds Act, and you'll see salaries against the grant, so I'm just gonna ask that we can get this re-signed. Is there a, okay, then I will move A2 to non-consent. But I'll still ask, trustee Valado and President Broderick still moving second in on non-consent?
Mm-hmm.
You? I'm gonna ask us to go to A29, and this is the New Jersey, the Teach New Jersey, if you remember, there were some empty spaces, and we filled those in, I think we were missing some teachers on the original resolution.
As they work back to vacation.
All right, so now you'll see all the assignments from the administrators to the teachers.
Gary?
Yes, same thing?
Same thing.
Sorry about that, did you catch it?
Non-consent?
Moving ahead, 29, 31, okay, 31. At curriculum, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4 down, 5, 4, 1, 0, promotion and retention, that was the policy that was spoken about, the rest you'll see are just mandated changing, changes that we have to do, then if you want to just real quick on promotion and retention...
It basically stays the same, except there was a strong recommendation from the Department of Education, that compulsory ed-wise, 6 to 16, they strongly recommend you cannot retain a student as a kindergarten because they're not 6 yet, so we put in the, the recommendation was that the mutual agreement between the teacher and the parent, that the retention would take place.
So, it's just a recommendation, not a requirement?
Right, we can't, we ultimately, we used to say, students in K-1, 2, and 3, who fail either English Language Arts and/or Mathematics will be retained, we have to take the kindergarten out, but we put the carousel in, that if the parent agrees to it after a conversation with the teacher, we will make a note of the Q and folder, and keep the student a kindergarten. We believe it's the appropriate thing to do, we just need to put it in a policy.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dixon.
Next up is Resolution A32, which was your board goals, we didn't wanna sign it at the committee meeting, we wanted everybody to have a chance to take a look at it and what we sent home. We wanted everybody to have a chance to take a look at it and what we sent home. And then finally with curriculum, there was a resolution that was added. A33 is a contract with Management and Evaluation Associates, and this is to, for analysis So I'll make those two changes on those resolutions and move that to non-consent. That is, that completes curriculum. Any comments from anyone on the committee? There was one item that came out of the meeting that isn't on a resolution. We discussed the Field of Heroes, and I think the consensus of the committee was a monument outside where the flagpole is. There will be a sign similar to this. The names will be a little larger, and then the only names on the plaque will be our honor better.
We didn't feel we needed to put the trustees, we didn't have to name them just the veterans.
Oh, I agree.
So that will not say, would say flagpole. Flagpole.
I mean, we want to have it outside as opposed to inside, just so everybody in this city can see it.
Absolutely.
Hopefully we'll be able to hold three of those.
I don't want to go on camera.
Well, we're going to do four a year, so that would, that plaque that we're thinking of would take us 15 years. And then when we're all gone 15 years from now, somebody else will decide on doing another plaque.
The design that we're supposed to, Mr. Cooper, about, because our, our personnel would be building that, would be that the top plaque then moves down to the front and it's placed there and so on. So it would actually get probably 45 years.
Just one quick question, Dr. Deggman. I guess Dr. Deggman could better handle this. On Resolution A33, PARK analyze, I, I feel we, I feel we have a specialist on staff.
So we do, we have a data analyst coordinator, but this is also for professional development. We have Dr. Swincom in, that's part of it, and he does our data team. So looking at, we have to look at CUSAC. The rules changed for CUSAC. We can do the district and the school level, however, when you have to look at the 6,000 individual students, we still would have to use EMINI. There's no possible way, we're talking about efficiency, that we could come in and break it down by, by child, by student.
So this is a contracted company that we bring in to analyze what we've already analyzed?
No, no, we, they help us with our analyzing of the park data. So when, in September, we have 60 days from when this data comes in that I have to present to the board, how we did on the PARK, the science, 5, 3, 5, grade 8, and grade 11, the WIDA, which is the English Language Test, and the BLM District, the, the Act of Learning Masks, by sub-group, okay, economic division rates by school, and then by student. So EMINI was something we, we had to allocate away money that we used in the past. It cost us $16,000. Reason why part of this late is because I negotiated it down to, oh, I think I got it down to $11,000.
Yeah.
Which is all inclusive of the data charts, the data team training, where you were coming.
So this is basically almost a CUSAC performance?
Well, yeah, we're going to have to do this for CUSAC. Now, you're right, we do have a data analyst coordinator, but the sheer volume of what has to be done, that's what she would do probably, and she's a 10-month employee now, so when she walked in the room...
Well, it just seemed initially, initially it seemed redundant to me, but now you've explained it, it makes sense.
I, I think if, if we had a person, maybe could start earlier in the year.
All right.
Now, that person would, would be working, doing the PARK in the summer. We had that person, I remember, in the PARK in the summer.
No, I just saw this now, so that's why I was questioning. I wasn't wondering.
And we had that conversation next year also. I agree.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move, so our consent agenda moved by trustee Velado, seconded by President Broderick. So moving along to finance, building new grounds, because of all the resolutions that were sent home, I'd like to, I just handed out a revised copy of B5, and it's just a language change that we did. This was the award of bid for the security cameras. So like I said, it was just...
It says B5?
B5. It was the one I, right here, is the one I just handed out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
And Matt didn't like the language, so we cleaned it up a little bit. It's the one I sent home. And then the other, the only other resolution you haven't seen is B13. And as you see, it's in that category with all our student tuitions. And B13 is a tuition contract with Collier School for two students. And once again, these are all July 1st, 2016, 2019. So there's that whole series from B7 down to B13. Okay? B7 to B13 are all those tuition contracts. Okay, so that is the finance agenda. I didn't get them signed that night, so I was wondering if maybe two members would like to volunteer to move in second?
I will.
Okay, trustee Munoz. Someone like to second?
Okay.
Okay, trustee. All right, unless there's any other questions, I'll move ahead and we'll go to personnel. Okay, so on personnel, I'm going to hand out a revised copy of C2. This is for a discussion inside. So we're going to switch out your Resolution C2 and put the new one in. Yeah, no, that's why it is, it is inside, but...
We'll take it inside.
Okay, but for outside, I'll ask you to turn to C10. This is our monthly hip report, and I'll turn the microphone over to Assistant Superintendent Copaz.
I've made a zero cases before this month.
Resolution, Resolution C14, that is going to be for inside. And I need some help on this one. C20, you want to say the final one? So C20 will also be inside. So the personnel agenda was moved by Vice President Wilback, and it was seconded by trustee Ryan. So then we have a number of non-consent items, and they're all going to be for inside.
Like, like the POs are inside too?
Um, yeah, we could, if there's an outstanding PO, let's, we'll put it aside, we'll grab somebody before we go back in, and we'll do a couple of minutes out here with that. But superintendent, that's all I have for this evening, so I will ask that we adjourn the closed session. I'm sorry, we're going to adjourn the open workshop, and we're going to go into a closed session. The legal personnel, there are no negotiation items. It is 6:57. The board will return for the public meeting.